Burn there for a long time. It's taken really dark color over the years. It's gone away.
That is wild.
It was just freak accident.
All right, y'all ready to go?
Yes.
All righty, I'm gonna call the meeting to order this evening. Looks like we've got just about a full house. Thank you for joining us. We always appreciate it of you taking the time to join us for a Greer City Council meeting. We have called and convened such a meeting this evening, September the 23rd, 2025. Having called the meeting to order, I'm gonna ask Councilman Mark Hopper, if he would, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then an invocation. If you'd like to join us, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, unregimented, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for your goodness and your provision for us even today and for bringing us here this evening. Lord, I thank you for the opportunity to serve my neighbors as a member of this body, as I know my colleagues do as well, Lord. We thank you for the way that you've blessed each one of us as individuals, as a city. And, Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to conduct the business of this city this evening. We pray that you would give us your mind and wisdom and justice to do what is right in your eyes and for the good of our neighbors. Lord, I pray that you would help us to follow the instruction of the Apostle Paul in Book of Philippians to lay aside conceit and vain selfish ambition, Lord, but help us to regard one another as more important than ourselves this evening. Lord, just everything that's done this evening, may it be to your honor, your glory, and may we accomplish what needs to be done. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Ms. Duncan, anyone to appear in public forum this evening?
No, sir.
With that, then, let's move to the minutes of the council meeting. Contained in your packet, you should have the minutes from September the 9th, 2025. I'll ask for a motion.
Don't move.
And a second.
A second.
Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danah?
Yes. Counsel, let's move to special recognition this evening. It is an opportunity for us to recognize some employees. We are always happy to do that and to thank them for their service to the city. And so this evening, I read the resolution, which is number 18-2025. That is a resolution recognizing and commending City of Greer employees. And whereas the City of Greer endeavors to recognize and reward its dedicated and faithful employees, whereas Julie Foster has served in the Police Department for five years, Taylor Gassaway served in the Police Department for five years, Joey Jones has served in the Public Services Department for five years, Joe Autry has served in the Planning and Development Services for 10 years, Julie Burgess has served in the Fire Department for 10 years, Alexander Cooper has served in the Police Department for 10 years, Smokey Price has served in the Public Services Department for 10 years, Christian Arreiro Ruiz has served in the Police Department for 10 years, Kristen Presley has served in the Municipal Court for 30 years, and Chuck McConnell has served in the Fire Department for 35 years. Whereas these employees have served in a distinguished and professional manner, now be it therefore resolved that City Council of the City of Greer, South Carolina, and a meeting duly assembled wishes to officially recognize and commend these employees for their distinguished and dedicated service which they have performed. We have further resolved that the City of Greer hereby rewards these dedicated employees with a certificate of appreciation and an administrative day off with pay approved this 23rd day of September, 2025. We'd like to recognize those employees. Now, I'll ask Mr. Merriman, if he will, to join me in the front.
Is, I call your name. If you would, please come to the front and stay with us for just a moment. Joey Jones. Smokey Price. Kristen Arreiro Ruiz. Christian Preston. The one short.
We're actually, we have a couple that did show.
Only one important one we're short.
You what?
Andy Merriman for five years.
Oh, no.
I didn't read his name, so he's not here today.
He owes us.
Five years. That is a well-known five years. We appreciate your service as well, too. Give these folks a big round of applause.
Very scruffy.
Counsel, contained in your packet this evening are our departmental reports. They have information in regards to the various different departments. You can look at those at your convenience. Department heads and/or Mr. Merriman will be glad to assist you with those. Chris Klein joins us for our financial review.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Financial performance summary as of August 2025. Starting in the general fund, we had a cash balance of $18,326,000, year-to-date revenues of $1,582,000, year-to-date expenditures of $9,161,000, and we are currently 1% over budget. We had an unfavorable revenue benchmark variance of $673,000, an unfavorable expenditure benchmark variance of $1,145,000, and a total overall unfavorable benchmark variance of Moving on to hospitality fund, we had a cash balance of $2,935,000, year-to-date revenues of $677,000, year-to-date expenditures of $8,400. Finally, stormwater fund, we had a cash balance of $3,757,000, year-to-date revenues of $30,620, and year-to-date expenditures of $93,351. And with that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you. Floor is open for discussion, counsel, or questions. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, before we move off that departmental reports, I encourage counsel to go back and look at the Fire Department's monthly report concerning EMS calls. It still seems to be an issue with long response times. We're adding to the total of greater than 30 and then greater than 40 minutes for waiting on ambulances to arrive. The one that really, where I guess it gets into the pocketbook, is where we, as the city, have to provide ALS service, meaning, I'm assuming that's where the county's units show up and they don't have a paramedic onboard, so we have to fill in. And I think we had, year-to-date, 24 in Greenville County, 31 in Spartanburg County. So, that's, I think that's more of a, that is something that needs to be resolved.
If that's fiscal year, that's a lot.
Yes.
It really is.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate the reminders. With that, counsel, let's move to a petitioner this evening. Mr. Rodney Hinton joins us this evening. Mr. Hinton, if you'll come to the podium as you get ready to give your remarks, we simply would ask that you state your name and address as a matter of record, and the floor is yours.
All right, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Rodney Hinton, 5 Chipping Court, Greenville, South Carolina. Raised in Victor Mill and love Greer, so thank y'all for serving this community. I wanted to speak with you tonight just about naming rights of some of the parks that are being built for some great people that have come before us. And one person that I have in mind that I've talked to different people about is Butch Miller, who passed away this year. Many of y'all probably knew Coach Miller, Coach Miller to me. So, our family moved to Greer when I was five years old, and he was our mailman. And as a mailman, and you're a kid with two brothers, one a year older, one a year younger, we always raised through the mailbox. And Coach Miller was always there to make sure each person got a piece of mail. But with that, he's also a Little League coach for Greer Parks and Recreation. And so he talked to my mother one day and said, hey, these boys need to play Little League football in Greer. He was a Greer High graduate and proud of the Yellow Jackets. And so my mom told him that we couldn't afford that and we couldn't play. And he said, just send them to Greer Parks and Rec and sign them up, and I'll take care of it. And so he did. At that time, the recreation center did not provide uniforms, and so he took care of that as well. I don't know who else in the community may have helped him. He may have done it all himself, but he was just that kind of leader. And so with that, also, I want to recognize his son, Chris Miller, sitting here, which was a good friend of mine growing up as well. And, you know, I talked to Chris about wanting to do this. And so you can read, if anybody wants to read, Coach Miller's obituary at the Wood Mortuary, it's on there. There's a video of it. You can read about his story. He was athletic director for Victor Mill. He was athletic director for Greer Mill at one time. People like to say that it takes a village, and being from Greer, I remind them, it takes a mill village, because that's where I grew up. And so with that, I just wanted to mention that. And then also, as a part of his obituary, that the family decided that memorials could be made to Greer Parks Recreation and Tourism Scholarship Fund. And so I don't know what that means, but I would love to be able to give some money and put his name on a park if y'all would so consider it. All right, that's it.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
We appreciate that insight, and thank you for joining us this evening, Chris. As you can imagine, as we move forward with our Sports and Events Center and other facilities that we're gonna be building over the next couple of years, there are gonna be opportunities for lots of naming rights in different forms and fashions. And I know that our staff is working on taking the policy that we have and looking at it and adding more information and guardrails around that. And so as we proceed to do that and get some insight from our staff about that, hopefully one of our members of council will bring this matter back before council, and there will be discussion around that. I think it's certainly appropriate, and we're gonna have many opportunities. We're just gonna need a little structure in that process. So, thank you for being here this evening. With that, then, let's move to the administrator's report. Mr. Merriman?
Mr. Mayor, counsel, thank you. The Community Standards and Compliance Division of our Planning and Development Department is collecting new or gently-used coats and cold-weather items through October. Donations can be dropped off at the Permits Desk in City Hall. So, if you've been to the Permits Desk in City Hall and seen the box, that's where you drop that stuff. It's gonna be given to Daily Bread Ministries and Greer Relief. We're also proud to share that Greer was nominated for two of Kitting Around Greenville's 2026 Kaboom Awards. Best outdoor playground would be Century Park, and best sports program, Greer Parks Recreation and Tourism. The next Greer Alive and Greer Farmers Market will be Friday, the 26th of this month, 4:30 to 8:00 here in City Park. So, come on out and enjoy local vendors, live music, and food. This Saturday, the 27th, from 10:00 to 2:00, is Rail Fest. Model trains, train museums, trackless train rides, along with free face painting balloons, inflatables, and all the good stuff that Rail Fest typically provides will be there for another great Rail Fest this weekend. Also, the Greer Chamber of Commerce will be hosting Arts and Eats Saturday, October 4th. This family-friendly festival is put on by the Chamber of Commerce and will be here downtown Greer from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. in downtown Greer. There will be local arts, artisan vendors, food, drinks, live music, and activities for kids. So, see the Greer Arts and Eats website for more information. The next installment of the Code Enforcement Community Engagement Meetings will be Thursday, October 9th, from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Center for the Arts at 804 Trade Street. These have been very well-attended and popular community events to help educate the public on how code enforcement works, how they can become a part of code enforcement in their communities, and how to better everybody's neighborhoods. So, if you have questions about how code enforcement works, our next, that next opportunity will be October 9th at the Center for the Arts. Truck or Treat, come out to support the Greer PD at Truck or Treat on Trade on October 26th from 5:00 to 7:30. So, mark your calendars for that. Also, a quick reminder from counsel, Benefits Fair is Thursday from 7:30 to 12:30 for all employees at the Cannon Center. And we will be hosting just an employee cookout on October 15th here at, down here in City Park. It'll just be for city employees, just a kind of a cookout we're gonna do, just a morale and team-building opportunity. So, I'd like to have counsel there, if you can be there. Now, with all of the things that I mentioned, all of these things are available through our social media networks, on our city website. So, I would encourage everybody, for all the information that they need, past, present, and future, for the things that are going on in this city is all available on the city website or on a link off of the city website. So, I would encourage everyone within the sound of my voice to engage our social media and engage our website for all information pertaining to the city. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Administrator will be glad to follow up with any additional information that the council may need by contacting him directly. Let's move to our only item of business this evening. The first item before us in new business is another early release package for the Sports and Events Center, structural early release. In order to keep construction of the Sports and Events Center on schedule for an early 2027 opening, Harper General Contractors has provided a second early release package to the city. These funds will allow Harper General Constructors, Contractors to purchase structural steel, concrete, and integrated sports equipment systems. Staff requests that the early release package price of $19 million be approved by council. Funding for this project will come from the Corporation for Greer. Mike Sell joins us for this discussion. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, counsel. As the mayor mentioned, council previously approved early release package, I think it was back in July. In that package, council probably recall that there was funding set aside for design assist in regards to structural steel and precast concrete and concrete for the site. That design work's been completed. The information has been evaluated and shared with our contractors and our staff. In part of the early release package, one of the objectives is to help keep the contract on schedule for completion. As you can imagine, this big and large size of building this is, the orders for precast concrete and structural steel has probably got, does have long lead times. And because of that, the contractor is asking us if we will engage in early release for those items. As the mayor mentioned, the total amount, the breakdown for that early release is that you have the cast-in-place concrete, which also includes some site concrete, precast concrete, which will be the tilt-up panels for the building, and then structural metal framing, which also includes miscellaneous steels like stairwells and other metal that's associated with the building. Waterproofing's in there for the concrete. It also includes termite treatment for the site as well, for the building pad. One of the items that's also included, this is gym equipment. Gym equipment has another long lead time. We've evaluated that particular package in submittals with our contractor partners and our design partners at MPS. And because of that long lead time, we're asking to include that gym equipment early release as well, so that we can get that equipment manufactured, ordered, and then sent to us and ready to go when it's time to install those items. As the mayor mentioned in his opening remarks, the total for the early release package is I am happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you, sir. For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Don't move.
Second. And a second. Floor is open for questions.
Mike, what percentage of this 19, what is the percentage of the 19 million versus the?
Total.
Yes.
All right, hold on. All right, let's see. With the early release package for the, I would say it's about 30% between the two.
So, we've?
Between the $9 million in the first early release and this million, in this package total for the early release would be about, it's $27 million. It's about 30% of the total.
The?
No, excuse me, 50%.
Yeah, 50%. How much?
50% of the total budget.
I see we are approving dollars for contingency.
Yes.
Why, have we already hit areas that we've had to dip into contingency?
The different contingencies is we are carrying contingency across the whole project. It's just broken down for each early release component of it. The total contract would have those contingencies built in it. This isn't additional contingency. It's just broken down for the 19 million that we're asking for in the early release. Contractor contingency, design contingency is at 1%. There are still potentially some design elements that might need to be addressed, so that's why we're still carrying the 1% contingency at, I believe it's $175,000. Contingency, even on the design assist things, we haven't used any contingency yet. It's just in case, you know, we need it. Any contingency, of course, is not used, would just be, would not be spent and rolled back into the less than the overall cost of the contract in the end. The contractor fee, 3.25%, and our own owner contingency at 1.5%. Our contingency for the owner's side is that, you know, if we, that is purely up to us. If we may elect to add a scope, we get out there and we decide we wanna expand, I'm just making things up, the pad for the playground. It gives me the ability to be able to add that to the scope and have that contingency already built into it without having to do a change order for a certain, you know, it'll be a change notification, but the contract price or the agreed price would not go up if we're taking out a contingency. The contractor contingency, I'll give you an example. One of the discussions that we had is in regards to the cast-in-place concrete. We have a maximum price that we're looking at. We also are looking at schedule. We're trying to make sure, but we're down to two subcontractors on that. And we need to make sure that the contractor is going to be responsive to the schedule that we've set. So, we're still got a little bit of due diligence on that, and there is a possibility that if we choose to, a contractor that will keep us on schedule within the contingency budget, we'll use those dollars to bring that contractor in. Or if the other contractor is able to meet our needs at a lower price point, then we would use them. We wouldn't use any contingency. It's just those are the examples, the what-ifs, that we wanna have those in there, in case we have to make those decisions before things are finalized.
So, the contingencies, we haven't received any kind of invoicing where we're having to apply that. It's just a, we've got it, we have the ability to go ahead if we feel like that.
That's correct.
Others?
Mr. Sell, can you give us examples of what integrated sports equipment systems means? What all would be included in that?
Absolutely. Great question. The gym equipment systems that we're looking at under this particular line item will include, there are, between both the main gym and the auxiliary gym, there are 18 overhead support at side brace, side folding basketball systems. There are 12, 13, there's 13 center drive curtain dividers for the main gym and for the auxiliary gym, one for the auxiliary gym, 12 for the main gym. And then there are 18 Sky Master overhead one-court volleyball systems that'll be installed with that. And then it also includes the control mechanisms, that we use a wireless control system to raise the curtains up and down and the equipment in place as well. It includes a pad for the main gym and a pad for the auxiliary gym. That's what's in that particular scope.
Thank you. Floor is open.
I've got one question. It's not really related to the release packages. It's more related to the signage around the Sports and Events Complex. I know as fast as this project is moving, and it's probably, I would like to put it higher on the priority level of some type of messaging, especially with the amount of cars, 14 gets with City of Greer moving that sign, putting that up on the priority level, making sure that the public can see this is the site that's, you know, we're spending all this money at. So, that's all I've got.
We will make sure that happens. That, we've been discussing that as well. There were some delays because of the, as you can tell, the construction fencing is not up on that particular side. There were some concerns early on in regards to making sure we had a good grasp on where the utility, the sewer utility that we have to install is going to be located in regards to the existing utilities that are in place, and making sure we had appropriate space. They didn't want to come out, put that fence in, and then have to move it. But we've been in discussions to get that done, and we will get that signage up. We were in full agreement, and we'll make sure that happens.
Yeah, we'll blink, and next thing you know, it's four months down the road, and...
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Speaking of signage, and this not related to the package either, but since you opened that door, I'll walk on in. One of the things that we asked the architect was the design, everything we do, it needs to represent Greer. And it dawned on me one day, one of the things that used to be done, the Greer Citizen did it, they would put a sandwich board out in front of their office when the Legion had a home game playing at Stevens Field. I talked to Mr. Merriman, I don't think we had figured in any electronic signage out there where we could advertise things that are going on that are related to sports, not just at our center, but around town. You know, we have, we've got two high schools now that are within city limits. There's a lot of things that go on that is recreation-related that we could use as advertising, and then for the things going on at that center. So, if that hasn't been spoken about, I think that would be something wise that we look into.
That's great insight, Mr. Airwood, and we have discussed that. We have gone, trying to determine how we wanna, if we're gonna use digital signage, digital billboard-type signage, is, you know, how that's done? Is it on the roadside? Is it something that you have on the building? What's the size of it? What size can we do under our existing code, things like that? But it is being discussed. We have not finalized that yet, but we are leaning heavily into that conversation with the intent of having something like that out there.
I'd like it if you kept me up to date on it.
Yes, sir. Sure will.
Mike, can you give an update about the expediency of things, why we're kind of in such a hurry to get this done by 2027? What's coming down the pipe for us?
when the, um, Legion had a home game playing at Stevens Field. Uh, I talked to Mr. Mayor Men. I don't think we had figured in any electronic signage out, out there, uh, where we could advertise things that are going on that are related to sports, not just at our center, but around town. You know, we have, we've got two high schools now, um, that, um, that are within the city limits. Well, there's a, a lot of things that go on that, um, that it, that is recreation-related that we could use as advertising and then for the things going on at that center. So if that hasn't been spoken about, I think that would be something wise that we look into.
Uh, that's great insight, Mr. Arrowood, and we have, uh, discussed that. Um, we have gone, um, trying to determine, um, how we want to, if we're going to use digital signage, digital billboard-type signage, is, you know, how that's done? Is it on the roadside? Is it something that you have on the building? What's the size of it? What size can we do under our existing code, things like that? But it is being discussed. We have not finalized that yet. But, um, we are leaning heavily into that conversation, uh, with the intent of having something like that out there.
I'd like, like it if you kept me up to date on it.
Yes, sir. Sure will.
Mike, can you give an update about the expediency of things, why we're kind of in such a hurry to get this done by 2027? What's coming down the pipe for us?
Yeah, we, uh, right now, our completion date is, um, February twenty-eighth, or twenty-seventh, twenty-sixth, something like that of 2027. Um, we've already shrunk that. It was originally, it was into March, uh, so we've shrunk it by about thirty days. Uh, we're in constant, uh, discussions with, uh, with Harper, uh, our G, our general contractor on the project to, you know, shrink that even more to get that closer into, you know, into January. It's tough. Um, it is, um, uh, building scope sizes project, there's just a lot of pieces to get everything coordinated, uh, together with all the different entities that have to come in. We're, uh, on our end, uh, permit reviews and stuff like that, we're being super responsive, uh, you know, and design reviews and things like that, trying to get that back to them as quickly as possible. We're working real heavily with MPS to get the design finished out. I'd say right now, we're probably, uh, if, if I had to guess, I think we're in the eighty-five to ninety percent range of, of, uh, getting close to the GMP. There's some fine details, um, you know, electrical is a big issue that we're still trying to, to get resolved. We're still trying to, um, uh, finalize, uh, the fine details of the project inside. The, the basic like structure and things like that we're bringing to early release obviously have been done. Uh, but we're close and, and we're getting there. So we're trying and, and they have committed to try to get that delivered earlier than what the schedule, uh, has allowed for. That helps with the schedule and keeping it on schedule. But, um, I'm, uh, on our end for the staff, uh, you know, we're just trying to make sure that, uh, we're doing everything we can to not have what I call self-inflicted delays, you know, with the project. And, uh, so, uh, and our partners have done a great job helping us, uh, in that regard as well. We just don't want to, uh, we could have waited, um, and, and, and did a package like this, uh, as part of the GMP. But, I mean, nobody, we don't want to get two months behind on the schedule. And given this today's environment, it's also about pricing. Uh, you know, um, things go up and down fairly quickly in, in this, uh, economic environment. And so we're just trying to stay ahead of it. So we're doing everything we can, uh, looking at this very much, uh, constantly and making sure that the schedule's maintained and that, uh, we have a, um, a complete. Right now, completion date is, there's no, we're not late. We're not behind. Uh, you know, I, I like to think we're ahead of schedule, but, uh, general contractor probably say we're on schedule. But I feel like we're, we're ahead of schedule and we'll continue to work on that.
Mr. Sell, in terms of a hard, drop-dead date, we don't have anything scheduled for that building before the summer of 2027, do we?
We have things coming up summer twenty-seven. We have opportunities that if we were to get this completed, that we could capitalize on if we could get it done earlier. Um, but, uh, and that's one of the reasons why we're putting a lot of pressure on the schedule, just trying to do everything we can to just try to make up some time to see if we can take advantage of those opportunities, uh, that would be earlier in the year.
Thank you, sir. Others?
Andy, I got a question with, you know, this is super important, but we've got other projects, I'm sure, that are planned. How are we prioritizing our staff's time to make sure the other items are getting done as well and we're not solely focusing on this?
So, just to give you a, just a, a quick overview, um, Mike is, acts as the project lead for these projects. He, he really, um, uh, represents administration and makes a number of administrative decisions as these projects move on, especially these larger ones. But I would be remiss not to mention, obviously, John and Lindsay, who are specifically dedicated to managing the projects from the top down. Uh, John spends a lot of time in the field. Uh, Lindsay is the straw that stirs the drink, is the best way to put it. She absolutely has everything, uh, from organized for us. So they are dedicated staff members that deal with our capital projects. Now, I'm going to add a little color to that to say that they're not on an island by themselves. Chief Hamby I saw in the room, he and, uh, Chief Flowers are integrate, um, intimately involved in, for instance, the public safety training facility and providing professional guidance there with our contractors and our design team because they're going to be the end users. Uh, same thing with Adam and, um, Adam Fouringer and his team, Anne and her team, users of these facilities are all a part of this process. So while they're handling a lot of the nuts and bolts of how the projects are being designed, built and implemented, the end users, the departments that'll be using those are intimately familiar with all that we're doing over there too. So to answer your question, we've got our hands on the steering wheel and we're comfortable with getting this done, delivering this to Counsel and this community.
Questions? Comments? Discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, we have no business in executive session this evening. We stand adjourned.